You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 10th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan Insurance Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accessinglaporte county.org.
Call the meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and limited. Just for all. Just for everybody's information, today is the first time we are using our newly acquired equipment to hold a Zoom meeting. So tonight it is just a test meeting. We did not send out an invitation to the general, you know, public or the towns public, in other words, but we just have a few test subjects doing it remotely. So we will figure out what it is we did right or wrong. Recording in progress. And well, good. And then hopefully going forward, we'll be able to announce that the meetings are going to take place both in person and via Zoom. And the recordings will then be the invitation will be sent out via the town's email for anybody who wants to participate and also post it up on the website, too. Okay.
Ralph, I don't know, you put blood into the TV so the people can see who's on the screen.
Yeah, that's for the next test.
Okay.
I didn't want things to be too loud.
Okay, there's an HDMI cord there that you could do.
Yeah, I was gonna check, make sure it was long enough tonight. I hope it works here next time.
Yeah, okay.
All right, great. Thank you. That is good to know. So now, for those of you who are here at the meeting, we during the test process before we've already heard that if several people are talking, there's a lot of, I guess, audio kind of noise and things crossing over so that we can't hear very clearly. Please speak only when you are called upon to speak, no comments from the side without having been recognized and hopefully no chatting between one another because I have no clue how well this will record, you know, like in the back or something like that. So, okay? Thank you. Joan, the roll call, please.
Dinah Dumbriz.
Present.
Michael Martinez, now he's virtual, right?
No, he is absent.
Oh, he's totally absent.
He's totally absent.
Okay. Ralph Fox. Sam Paxton.
He is virtual.
He's virtual.
Virtual.
Thank you, Sam.
Rich Young. I'm here. Attorney Brad Adamski.
Here.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Twistick.
Present.
And Park Dirt President, Dolly Millik, is absent. And so is VZA President Mark Bowen. Man gone. Okay, and Code Enforcement Assistant Building Commissioner Deb Chubb.
Here.
Fourth Plenary Minister, David Dumbriz, he's absent. And Plan Commission President Ralph Fox, we know he's here. And Website Samantha Arm is absent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Joan. I think maybe the correct term would be to use remote, right, instead of virtual? When someone is not here? Well, whatever. Okay. Our first order of business today before we get into the minutes in the agenda is the election of council president and vice president. So I hand the meeting over to Joan to run this part of the agenda. Joan?
Okay, we'll start with the council president. The nominations for the council president.
I nominate Dinah Dumbriz for president.
Any other nominations? Sam?
I would second.
Thank you. Okay, do I have any other nominations from the floor? Or anyone else? No? Do you want to vote on the election of Dinah now or do you want to wait until we get a vice president? Or do the vice president, I mean, vice president can be chosen by you, can it?
No, I thought that we voted last time, too.
Might have last time.
We did. We voted.
Okay.
Okay, or the last few years we voted, so.
Well, let's just do a vote on the president now.
Okay.
Rich Young. Yes or no? Aye. Ralph Fox.
Yes.
Sam Paxton.
Aye.
Okay, and Dinah?
I'll vote for myself, yes, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to vice president. For vice president, the nominations from the floor.
I'll nominate Michael Martinez as vice president.
Any other nominations from the floor? No?
Michael Martinez did say that if he was nominated to be vice president, he would agree to serve as vice president if he was elected.
I did get a second on it.
A second.
Okay, Sam. Okay, since we don't have any other nominations, let's vote on this. Roll call vote for Rich Young. Ralph Fox.
Yes.
Sam Paxton.
Aye.
Okay, and Michael's not here, so I guess it's up to Dinah.
Aye.
Okay, so we have four ayes. I think I hit everybody, right?
Yes.
Okay, but four ayes for president and four ayes also for the vice president. I think that someone could have, I mean, I was all over with. I think someone could have said to keep the president and vice president as is and someone seconded and you go.
Whoever's gonna be doing this in the future may be able to do that then. Thank you for the suggestion. Okay, and thank you for the nomination and for electing me. I hope I can continue, okay, working at this, so. And as I said, Michael did make the, told me that should he, I asked him, and I said, "Should you be nominated?" I said, "Would you be willing to serve?" He said, "Yes." I wasn't quite sure since of the use of remote, can you say that or not? So I just figured I'd check. Anyway, let us move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the adopting of the meeting agenda. All I had made with corrections on when I re-sent this today were a couple of corrections where I had missed a, I made it 22 instead of 23, I think. But at this time, since that went out late this afternoon, I do have a couple of things that I wanted to adjust or change. Under 11, I am removing B. Okay, so you would be aware, I'm taking B out, so refuse contract A and setting priority goals will be B. Okay, then there are various items that I wanted to add to 13, and at first I thought maybe I would add them under comments, and I said, "No, these are issues that we should bring up or maybe even unfinished business and stuff." So I am adding to number 10 under unfinished business ARPA. Under 13, I am, because there's nothing under there, so 13A would be MS4. 13, 13B would be gift for the website administrator. 13C is a discussion with regards to town emails at the end of the name instead of just our personal emails or using Gmail, because a question did come up. So at least an issue came up for me in using the emails, so that would be under 13. And then I have a few communications, but I can list those as we proceed, so. So those are the changes that I have made. Does anybody else have any additions or corrections? Anything to delete?
Under next Michigan Insurance meeting.
Yes.
The town council, February 14th, that needs to be 2023.
Yeah, that's where I changed, that's the last one I sent out, I changed it, thank you very much, because I caught it there. Okay, but thank you. Okay?
I move to accept the agenda with those modifications.
Okay. Ralph moved.
Ralph seconded.
Okay, Rich Young seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes. So the agenda has been approved. Okay, we can move on to the minutes. Approving the minutes of the December 13th, 2020 meeting. Are there any comments?
No, we reviewed the minutes at the last meeting. It was looking substantial. And frankly, don't remember why we didn't approve it at the time.
There was a change because Deb did come in, so we had to make that change.
Right, because you gave a call about the time.
Oh, the time, oh.
But I just, I think I know when it was, so I just put that in there.
Okay, thank you. Let's look. I don't have that agenda with me now, so, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2020 meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. I need a second, Rich Young, Ralph Fox moved, Rich Young seconded to accept the or approve the minutes of the December 13th meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it. Minutes have been approved. Now approving the meeting minutes of December 29th, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? Any comments, any corrections, any additions?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Rich, have you had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Any comments?
No.
Sam?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, in that case, I need a motion to approve. The minutes is presented. Okay, Rich Young moves. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, so the ayes have it. The minutes of the December 29th meeting have been approved. Joan, is it necessary because it's a memorandum for the workshop? I don't know if this has to go through?
Yes. We should have them for all of our workshops and all of our committees, but we have them all.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for the ones from the 75th.
Oh, the committee meetings, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So the town council workshop minutes, have you had a chance to take a look at them? Any comments to make on those? Rich? Sam?
Did I miss anything? We've got a pretty long list here, thanks.
It is a long list, but I think that you got it.
Okay.
We did trash and recycling. I think I've got everything here because I checked my notes before. All right. Any additions, corrections? No? Okay, then I need, I'm sorry, Sam, go ahead.
None here.
Okay, so any additions or corrections on this? For the workshop minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves to accept those, approve those. I need a second. Okay, Sam Paxton seconds the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it. And the minutes of the workshop have been approved. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the reports from committees, clerk treasurer, and so forth. I didn't, these aren't signed yet, Joan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm off my report. I'm gonna give you the revised vouchers for December 13th. There was two additions to it. The Comcast bill of $121.20 and retrographic cards of $180. It's for the winter newsletter. And so the new total. Is that right?
I thought we, did we not do that already?
You did it, but you requested to have a revised one. So I revised it.
Okay.
All I did was add those two, and it comes to grand total of $48,221.69.
Okay, so we will need to approve this all over again then because we missed the last time.
We're redoing.
These are the December.
13th meeting.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay. I need a second, Rich Young. Rich, did you say you seconded? Thank you. Okay, Ralph Fox, move to approve the vouchers for the December 13th additional revision. Rich Young seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion has carried and the vouchers have been approved. Okay?
Okay, let's move on to the January 10th vouchers. County of Long Beach, $5,023 for police protection. Michigan Insurance voluntary fire department, $105 for rental office and meeting room, Office Depot, office supplies, $38.99. We also had what they call reward certificates, which gave us $28.19 credit. Ames for the membership dues, $50, and that is just for the ADA. And then there is one just for the Ames organization itself, it's $904. Republic Services for the refusers, $4,003.20. Department of Water Works for Kincaid Park, $9.36. And Dull and Repair, $407.91 for the battery, wiper blades, and all they checked, they said the lower portion, I would assume that means the lower portion of the truck, it was for the dump truck. And there was labor involved in it. AT&amp;T internet phone for January, $102.45. Comcast, $130.06. Horizon Bank, $35 for safe deposit. Brenda Heckman for travel, $45. Office depot expense, postage, $240. That was for the last go on with the leaf pickup and the winter newsletter. Office depot for comprehensive plan, $69.99 for the printing. That was for the proposed one that Ralph requested. We did get a deal on that. I had enough coupons and enough credits built up. Michigan Insurance volunteer fire department for fire protection, $3,683.16. Mick Wolf for removing trees from the white ditch bank, which is behind 29 Sunset, $1,500. Jim McKay for, we had the computer checked in, clean files, updated software, and purchased some software for Brenda's computer to bring it up to date, and that was $412.50. And Department of Water Works for the garage water, $9.36 for a total of $16,730.79.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yes, what's in the safety deposit box?
Deeds to the property that we own.
Okay.
There's some old files when the town was incorporated, things that you can't replace unless you go through a lot of trouble.
Right, good, good enough.
That's $35, it's for the whole year.
For the whole year, yeah. It's not bad for what you're getting out of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 10th vouchers.
Okay, Ralph Fox, move to approve the vouchers. I need a second. Okay, Rich Young will second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sam?
He fell asleep.
I think we lost him.
Could you tell him, Ralph?
He's not muted.
Ralph, I mean, sorry. Sam, did you hear?
Yeah, I thought I wasn't able to approve since I'm not present. Is that your case, sir?
This is, for the vouchers, I think it's okay to approve remotely.
Yeah.
I think you're good, Sam.
Yeah.
It's moot because you have three members voting in favor here.
Yeah. Okay, so you can vote, Sam.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so the ayes have it, the vouchers have been approved. Thank you.
And I think I've made you all aware of the refu service we have until March 23.
Yes, and that's included under, we have refu service under new business. Okay, so thank you. All right. And that's it now for the vouchers, Joan? These are the minutes, okay? And the others are still moving along, okay? At this point, we move on to resolutions and ordinances. The first one to come up is the code enforcement officer building commissioner ordinance prepared by Michael Martinez. Have you had a chance to take a look at the ordinance Michael sent through?
Yes.
Okay. Rich, did you get a copy of that or not?
No, he didn't. Because I don't have one yet either. It must still be on my internet.
Okay. And it would, it was sent out around the 5th, I think, 5th or 6th, so a few days ago, by Michael.
I've got everything except what I received late this afternoon.
Okay.
I hope somebody's got copies of it.
Okay, and Sam?
I have, I have the documents.
Have you?
Yes, I read it.
You've had a chance to read it, okay? Were there any other comments, any other changes or anything to that document? Rich, did you get the original document from last, you have the original one that Michael had prepared for the December 13th meeting?
I don't know. Probably.
Oh, so you, then do not remember whether you had a chance to look at that one? I know we discussed it at the meeting last time around.
I don't have it anymore.
Okay. Okay. So if, are there any other kind of questions with regards to that, the change that was suggested and agreed upon at that last meeting, or do we add anything else? Is this good to go for a vote? And I'm not sure if we can vote, because.
I don't know what you have in there concerning my duties.
They haven't changed, none of those changed.
I don't even know, I don't remember what's all in there, so I don't know which.
Well, I'd like to ask Brad, could we vote on it? We have three members that have seen the latest version, fourth that has seen the previous version.
Well, and Michael, well, he's away and he, he's the one who prepared it, or should this wait until the next?
When did it come up?
Last meeting.
Well, it's come up at the last two or three.
Right.
What is it called?
This is where the change took place for the code enforcement officer, and I believe that, I'm not even sure if this is a resolution or an ordinance, that code enforcement officer slash building commissioner, but I think we called it an ordinance. Okay, then we didn't, we didn't bring it up for a vote last month then, so the discussion previously was in November.
Right.
This would be a first reading on this one anyway, then.
Does something like this need two readings?
I don't know. Brad, what would you advise?
If you're adopting as an ordinance, it would, you're gonna adopt the same procedures for ordinance.
And a resolution would?
Revise that as an ordinance. So do what you think.
It's remaining consistent.
Okay, all right. Okay, then let us put this off, my suggestion would be to put it off then until next month when Michael will be here, and we will make sure that Rich has, and he has copied to review as well.
So we haven't had a first reading?
I, I don't, do not recall.
Two months is what I'm asking.
We could probably approve this because there's no financial kind of thing involved, right? At the same meeting, so we can do a first reading and then dispense for the second reading and then vote at that same meeting, correct? I believe.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, right.
Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna vote yet, so I don't.
No, that's why, we're not gonna do that now. What we're saying, that would be put off until next month, Rich, so that you would have a copy. It was the building commissioner, the code enforcement officer slash building commissioner, not assistant building commissioner.
Did you came up at the last meeting?
Last meeting, we, I don't, I think that we took it off the agenda, but it was at the meeting before then, which was in November.
A draft was circulated, it looks like December 13th to all departments. I don't see the January one. I might have included it ahead and then.
Yeah, Michael sent that out. I didn't even look to see who he sent it. I thought he sent it to everybody.
I would presume he sent it to everybody.
Yeah, okay, then let us, my suggestion is that we have to table that until, until next month then. And we will get it out to everybody and then we can work on that in February. Okay? So that is tabled now. Okay, thank you. So then we move on to the noise ordinance. Ralph?
So, good passing, Ralph.
Thank you.
Okay, last meeting, we had first reading, over a few comments. It was suggested that we add in the preference, all the times in the ordinance, simple time, and I had done that. There was a type of it that was corrected, and then there was a request that we put in.
But I don't have the code enforcement.
It was a request that we put in, it's the responsibility of the homeowner to ensure full compliance with these regulations. I think we discussed that and it felt that it was better to put it not in the ordinance itself, but in the second document I sent around, which is the, more of the layman's terms of this ordinance, the town Michigan Insurance and West Regulations. This document again would be posted in the message boards, it would be filed with the permits, it would be issued, telling contractors and homeowners what the new rules. So if there's any other questions before I do a second reading? Comments?
Rich?
There's really been no significant changes, just a couple of wording things, Rich, since our last conversation.
Anything from you, Sam?
No. Brad threw it, Ralph's heard over.
Should, under the legal holiday, since we have Christmas Day, which is a religious day, should we have Easter?
Well, it's fair, there's a lot of, way too much investigation on legal holidays. But I don't know that that's considered a state legal holiday. We, of course, this document is not part of ordinance, so we could easily add something like that in.
I'm guessing, given that it falls on a Sunday, the government probably hasn't had to really make a formal address, so it's good.
Good Friday.
I think they address Good Friday.
Yeah.
Well, I'd suggest we just add Easter later on to the other one, because I know from personal experience that one of the, one of the neighbors started blowing leaves at like 7:30 in the morning on Easter morning, and another neighbor came running up down the street very irate at having been woken up. And, you know, on a Sunday and on a holiday, he said, you know.
But that is covered in the ordinance, in that we can't do that kind of thing on a Sunday morning. And that, we can't do that kind of thing on a Sunday morning at seven. You can only make those kinds of noises after ten o'clock on Sundays.
But to this person, it was because it was the holiday too. It was important that this is, to this person, it was an important holiday.
There is at least half again, maybe twice as many holidays as I've listed here. That various...
Other than the federal state.
That's not a holiday.
It's not.
Well, anyway, but those are things that we can discuss. That is on the rules that we're going to post. So those dates are not in the ordinance so that we could add and take away without any kind of problems, without having to review and renew the ordinance itself. So let's just put away discussion on the dates right now and leave that off until, you know, any adjustments we need.
We can change this document with it, doesn't require.
Okay. So then let's, that can be worked on, but let's move on then with the actual ordinance itself. Sam, you were going to say something?
If I did, it would be important.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the Town of Michigan Asshores Ordinance twenty-two dash oh seven, an ordinance amending the noise abatement ordinance, the creation of quiet hours, and amending the short-term rental safety and security ordinance for the Town of Michigan Asshores, Indiana. The town code of the Town of Michigan Asshore shall be amended to add the following to Title III, Public Health, Safety and Welfare, Article One, General Regulations, Chapter Seven, Noise Abatement, Section Three dash one dash seven dash one, prohibition of noise from construction and lawn or home maintenance during certain hours as follows. Section Three dash one dash seven dash one, prohibition of noise from construction and lawn or home maintenance during certain hours, all times or Central Time. A person or commercial entity who A, commences any construction or landscaping work activity before eight AM, or B, commences or continues such activity after seven PM, C, any person or commercial entity who commences or continues such activity on Sundays or legal holidays within the town limits, D, any person or commercial entity who between the hours of seven PM and eight AM, Monday through Saturday, and seven PM and ten AM, Saturday to Sunday, commences or continues activities that generate noises, customarily resulting from construction work which are not subject to the requirement to obtain a building permit, handling noises customarily resulting from the maintenance of grounds utilizing noise generating equipment such as, but not limited to, lawn mowers, leaf doors, or chainsaws, E, quiet hours, any person or commercial entity causing any discernible sound on the zonema lot during the hours of ten PM to eight AM the following day, Sunday through Thursday, or eleven PM to eight AM, Friday to Saturday, or eleven PM to ten AM, Sunday, commits a violation. Noise generated by snow removal or emergency responses are exempt from these regulations. The Ordinance twenty-two dash oh two, Short-Term Rental Safety and Security, shall be amended to replace Section B, Permit Application and Approval Process, Six, Permit Reclamation, A, violations, Sections Ten and Sections Seventeen, and Permit Application Appendix One, Sections Ten and Section N seventeen, of the Michigan Asshore Short-Term Rental Affirmation Statement with the following: No use of fireworks or short-term rental guests at any time. Seventeen, Quiet hours commence at ten PM and end at eight AM, Central Time, Sunday through Thursday, and commence at eleven PM Central Time and end at eight AM Friday through Saturday, and commence at eleven PM and end at ten AM Central Time, Sunday. Now therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted by the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Asshore of Fort County, Indiana as follows. The repeal will be all prior ordinances or resolutions of parts thereof inconsistent with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Several ability clauses, if any section clause provision or portion of this resolution is deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such provisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, passed and adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Asshore, County of Fort, Indiana, this fifth day of January twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, council, any questions, any comments?
It looks great to me.
Rich, how about you? Okay. I don't have any questions or comments either. I think this looks good, you know, the way it is. So in that case, I would look for a motion to approve the Ordinance twenty-two dash zero seven and ordinance amending the noise abatement ordinance. Do I have someone to make a motion?
First reading or second reading?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash oh seven.
Okay. I need a second? Okay.
I'll second.
All right. So Sam Paxton has moved and Ralph Box has seconded the acceptance, the approval of an ordinance amending the noise abatement ordinance, the creation of quiet hours, and amending the short-term rental safety and security ordinance for the Town of Michigan Asshore, Indiana on second reading. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye through a roll call vote.
Rich Young? Ralph Box?
Aye.
Tida Dumbriz?
Aye.
Sam Paxton?
Aye.
Who did I miss?
Okay, all ayes and the motion to approve the ordinance has passed.
Is that the second?
It was the second reading.
Okay, so what you're saying is?
Have approved the ordinance amending the noise abatement ordinance on second reading.
Okay.
Gentlemen, hold on. Joan has a question?
So the questions that Rich has about the holidays, you're going to make an amendment to this then?
No.
No.
Those holidays are not specifically in the ordinance. They're the separate document that would just be posted and given out with the permits. So we can continue that discussion separately and update this as we see fit. We can change it over time if we determine that. I just wanted to prevent it from being, putting specific dates in so that we would have to address it every year and leave it for people to determine that it says New Year's Day, we don't need to tell them that date. They can figure it out.
Okay. I agree. Okay. But would you want to go along with what the state posts every year?
Well, it changes. I would look at the state holidays for the last three years. They're different a little bit every year. Because they're flexible based on what days things go on. Not all of them are moved to Friday and Monday, it turns out. And that gets too complicated.
And they also have a longer list. It's almost double, right? So we said that that's, it's too many days. So this way, it leaves it up to us to make a determination from the town. Okay. So back, we have already voted and it was all ayes. So the motion to approve on second reading, Ordinance twenty-two dash zero seven, has been approved.
Okay, I need signatures.
Okay.
Okay, I have a copy here, you can sign.
Okay. And I have a copy here, you can sign.
Okay, all right. And we'll start here. Well, let's use this one then. I'll sign and pass them down, okay?
So what we're going to do, the process, just a couple of things. We will want to communicate this fairly widely, so that, it must be straightforward. So I'm going to propose that in future flyers, at least the next couple that we do, particularly heading into construction season, that we make sure we reference this. Well, we should also make reference to it in someplace on our website, specifically. And I would also have them post the regulations on the website. We can put the ordinance there too, but the regulations are clearer. We will also put them in the message boards, this...
Yes.
Regulation of this, we'll post it in the message boards. And we would request that when someone is given a permit, they're given this regulation backing as well upfront. The, I do have an answer to any question and I can talk to Deb about this offline, but what do we do about existing permits, people that, going forward? But we don't need to take up the town council's time.
Correct.
Sam and I and Deb can discuss how best to handle it.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Okay. Let us move on then to the next point here. Here we go. Joan, we have how many here? This is one, two. Here we go. Here there, here we go. Here, I'm sending you back that one. Thank you. Okay. Let us move on to the next. I will begin this by saying appointments to boards and commissions liaison positions. As far, right now, I believe our road commissioner is still willing to stay in his position. Okay, is that an aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Bob. We're very glad that you do that and are appreciative of the work. The floodplain administrator, Ray Dumbriz, has reluctantly agreed because I won't let him resign. So park board, we don't have, have not checked any kind of dates to see if we have to make new appointments on the park board, but we will do that for the next meeting. They do not meet anyway until March, so we have time to do this. And that is just the park board, not the boosters. The BZA is still up in the air. I need data on the actual appointments of two of the longer-term members to find out whether they would be, you know, staying on the BZA or not if we, and ask them if necessary. So we're not making any decisions on that. Advisory Plan Commission is all set by dates. Nobody is leaving until, I think we've got one leaving at the end of this year, or, you know, we will ask them to stay or, you know, look for someone else, but we're good.
Excuse me, there should be one on the BZA and one on the Advisory Plan Commission because their terms are staggered.
They are staggered.
So there should be one every year that is being replaced or...
Well, the numbers, then we will look at those numbers again together. But there, right now, there is nothing to replace and no comments to be made at this meeting. This was just a report to, for those positions there. Okay, departmental reports, Police Chief Mark Liston.
Good evening for the month of December twenty-two. In reference to the three communities of the Long Beach Police Department Services, we responded to two-hundred-and-twelve calls for service when compared to the one-hundred-and-forty calls for service in the previous year, for an increase of seventy-two calls for service. During the month, seven incident reports were documented, five individuals were arrested, one felony arrest, reference a vehicle pursuit of a vehicle that was caught on radar traveling over a hundred miles per hour just outside here on US twelve. Individual fled and Deputy Jason Miguelsky eventually took him into custody after a foot pursuit in the city of Michigan City. Four additional arrests for misdemeanor offenses, two of which were traffic-related and two were for individuals that were operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. And then also during the month, Deputy Mitchell Sykes received a letter of commendation for his actions when responding to assist the Michigan City Police and Fire Department along State Road two-twelve at the Dunes Trailer Park. He did an excellent job there, having to force entry into a home where the home was filled with smoke and the individual was removed and rescued from inside the home. Lastly, I would like to congratulate our very own Chief Deputy Marshal James Schooly for completing twenty-five years of service with the Long Beach Police Department and serving all three communities. Very proud of his dedicated service over the past twenty-five years and he continues to serve on the Long Beach Police Department. And then in the past couple of weeks, just to let you know, we've been patrolling El Paso and the Town of Michigan a little bit more on some traffic offenses and this radar patrol during the day. So I'm just going to continue to do that for you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to Sergeant Schooly. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from anybody? No, thank you. Okay. Chief Bendix?
For the month of December, we spent a hundred-and-fifty, one-point-five hours. We had four meetings during the month. We had twelve calls and two of them were Michigan Asshore and both of them were medical calls. For the year, we tied the most calls we ever had two years ago, a hundred-and-sixty-one. And I would like to give a shout out to these two individuals. That Mick Wolf responded to a hundred-and-fifteen of the calls and his brother Chris, a hundred-and-ten.
Well, awesome.
That's...
Awesome.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So let's move on to the Code Enforcement Officer Report.
So I have submitted my report via email and then I talked to this here. I'm literally just one permit there this whole month. Nothing, a whole letter reported has changed since the last month. I've been forwarding citations to the town clerk for collections. Oh, it is an interesting item here, I guess, that I talked to a plumber who called about moving a gas line for someone to his meter, and he talked about the fact that, he said this was happening all over, that there was leaky gas meters. It was over at this gentleman's house at four or five Groveland and he could smell it. And it was definitely leaking and they're moving it. And he made it sound like this was happening in many places. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, just to keep your eye out for that. And I wasn't sure who should be inspecting or looking at these things. And the Fort County Building Commissioner, Doc, who does our inspections, really said, leave it to Nitsco. So, and that's what we'll do.
Well, we can always mention on an email blast and in the next newsletter that if you should smell gas, please make sure you notify someone. You know, or Nitsco, to notify Nitsco.
It's in your Nitsco bills, they tell you what to do.
Yes, that's true, but not everybody pays attention.
No, I know that.
They pay the bill and that's it. Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, so I have a question about thirty-six twenty-one match train. You say no activity since last month. I'm waiting on your levels going up.
So that's why I built this partial carport.
Okay.
And it's still sitting up there. And then they disappear for many months of the year. And then they show up for, you know, a couple of months. I give them the citation, tell them they need to do it, and then they disappear.
Okay.
So I'm getting very far on that.
But is that's one of those that has been submitting, we're submitting to send another letter and now it's going to go through legal?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah. Just back on that gas thing, just like, you know, the meters are outside and that's why it's not a big, you know, emergency problem, because it's not an indoor leak, which would be very dangerous. But people should kind of sniff around, there are gas meters. Just to see if there's a leak. And then according to the Druse, the gentleman told me that Nitsco told him that this leak, which I could smell from, you know, six or seven feet away, just standing outside, that it was, it was a leak that only really needed detention within the next three to six months. So I guess maybe it's more panic. Did you smell it? But reported.
Okay. Good to know.
Yep. You know, sent out another fifth citation to create for free, which would, for continued short-term rentals with that permit that of course followed up, sent all that to the town clerk. Oh, yeah, so just other conversations we've had. I got a question about the change you made to the short-term rental ordinance. Is that, is that all the changes that you plan to make to the ordinance?
No, those are just more related. The issue that we have is that we did not have quiet hours determined for Michigan Asshore, that they were defined in the short-term rental ordinance. So in, in state law requires us, we can't have special laws for short-term rentals that don't apply to everybody, plus it makes sense to have quiet hours. So that kind of fixes that issue. But a short-term rental is that I'm going to process.
And then just one other thing I wanted to mention, in the noise ordinance, it seems to me that there are, people are installing these generators, you know, hooking them right to their gas lines when the power is up. And every so often... And every so often, they do this cycling process that is really loud.
But once a month, they kick in on that test.
Yeah. So, so I guess I'm wondering if that's, we're going to see some of that complaints under this.
We'll see.
All right, that's a wrap up.
Thank you. Any questions for Deb, council members? No? Okay. Thank you. There's no park board report. Road Commissioner Bob Solkowski, please.
No report.
Okay. We've heard about the expenses, so we know what happened. Okay, thank you. Advisory Plan Commission, Ralph?
I was unable to attend this past week's meeting, so we have enough to hang with.
Well, the biggest thing that was decided was to hold, to set the meeting for, I believe it's the July meeting. It will take place Thursday on the 6th as opposed to on the 4th.
I would add to that, that we're getting very close to having a final document for the conference of plan updates. Hope to vote on that to take it forward for public comment at the next meeting. And then, so hopefully in March, we could have the public comment on it and then bring it to the town council or at the following week. But we'll just see how that process goes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. No report right now from Matt Bowen and the BZA. I believe they're supposed to have a meeting this month on the 19th. White Ditch Drainage Board, we, I attended the meeting today. Michiana Shores was not on the agenda and I did not bring it up. Figure no problem, you know? I'm not going to look for any. Website Samantha Arnold, there's no, nothing in particular new except that I had asked her about whether or not it would be possible for council members, if needed, to get an email through the website the way it is set up now. So, I will bring that up under Ms. Laney's business again a second time over there. NERC C, there will be a meeting on January 19th, which I will attend. And that's going to be a big meeting with, you know, budgets and voting and so forth. So, I'll have something to say about that then. So, now we can move on to unfinished business. And the first listed is the review of the Community Crossings Grant and the proposal that we received from Global Engineering. Council members, have you had a chance to review the document that was sent out and the streets that were listed?
Yes. I want all the streets reviewed document and reviewed the original proposal, the Doyle presented the last year as well, and provide feedback to the other town council members. Great plans.
Okay. Any comments from Sam or Rich?
I second what Ralph said last meeting or maybe, but we shouldn't be worried about our views. We thought, I mean that.
To me, the worst ones are Hiawatha from Spokane down to El Portal, from El Portal all the way to Piney Lake and then Piney Lake all the way to Parkside.
Yeah, so Bob, I don't know if you've seen this, but I went and walked the streets that have been proposed and they're, they're all grouped in the Luinheim, Bittersweet or Beautus area over by Henry Wood. And in general, the roads are okay. The intersections, I felt, were in bad shape. There's a couple of really bad spots here and there. But I particularly have an issue with paving the unpaid portion of our Beautus. To me, that doesn't sound like the best use of the town's money because there's no homes directly facing that area.
The only thing that we've had to do with that section of our Beautus for the last 30 years was we had to cut it because Burtwood had to get to that.
Yeah, there's a couple of trees down. It probably needs to be kept open, but as far as spending whatever. So, I, I had issues with the proposal, but I didn't talk to these guys. I don't know where they were coming from. But I also looked at what Doyle had put on his list for the, the key items for this, propose for this year. And Burtwood is listed in a couple of places, Heimwood as well. But he has Hiawatha, parts of Oakland that I know had bad spots. And we know that El Portal has some bad issues. And I think Sam brought up parts of Michiana are in bad shape. So, I don't know how to move on, Donna. We only have a few weeks before.
Yes. It's due at the end of the month. I agree. You know, there's some of these streets, you know, I went up and down, you know, driving up and down all of the streets in town. I looked first at these and I made some notes, you know, the ones that were, you know, recommended here. And then I took a look just driving, you know, all the other streets where, you know, you see potholes in one spot. There's like three potholes. I think it's at the corner, maybe where our Beautus hits Bittersweet or something like that, you know? But like to do the whole street for those three? I don't know whether that would be at all necessary when I took a look at some of these. And yes, some of the streets are, you know, I think that do need more, more help. I don't want to address my own street because then that would look as if I'm asking for my street. But, so I won't even mention that. But, but there are various other streets that also look like they need a lot of help. You know, even that little tiny Manawa or, I think it's Manawa, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, like even that one needs help and stuff like this. And that one has quite a few homes on it, actually. You know, it's a small place, but it's got a lot of homes on it. So, I'm not sure now. You have worked on this, Bob, and Joan could probably add something, too. How closely to this recommendation from the engineering firm does the town have to stick for those recommendations when we make the application?
I don't think they have to at all. The original one, Doyle, the next few years after that, I wanted to change that up and do some of the streets and thought about the right. There needed to be done more than what we had on this list.
Okay. Because this pays a report as act, I mean, this, this recommendation is based on Mr. Doyle's last, you know, the, the report that was for in December 2021 for 2022. So, I'm wondering if we can make any of these kind of changes and recommend that we would prefer that these other streets, several of the other streets be done? How is this, how do we proceed on that now?
I think you make a recommendation, engineer, that you rather have these streets on in one of them.
And just make.
I don't know what was proposed, but I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay.
But the roads that we just talked about are definitely ones that need to be.
Okay. All right.
The ones like New Pine and the other ones that you talked about, Ralph. Also, when I talked to John Doyle, I specifically requested them to widen to 18-foot.
Yeah, the, 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 not 18 feet.
Right. And them roads are not traveled that much, so it can be done.
Okay. Well, then I think maybe we can sit down. My thought then would be is to sit down with you to go over this, too. And then, you know, we can, if you've got a few minutes one day to sit down and do this and then turn to the engineers again and send a suggestion. I could check with you guys. Sam, did you have any comments on this?
Unlike Ralph, I, I think some of the streets that were identified that are in the Oak Dip or Burtwood and, and Brookside area are, I don't see a huge need over there. I do think your street, Hiawatha, all the way up the west end of it is in horrible shape. And there are other spots, but, you know, I'm not familiar with the grant process and what it takes to, you know, if, if reliance upon these engineering reports is the only ammunition that we have to present to the, to the grant committee that's going to approve our request. And I don't, I don't know that we have much choice if we only have two weeks.
Well, we have to go back to them now. They've sent this out to us and which is why I asked for comments from everybody, you know, for this. So, let's go, we'll work on this immediately. Then to get this taken care of and we'll get back to them. You know, everything is electronic anyway. So, we'll send that back to them as soon as possible. Bob, do you have time to meet tomorrow?
Yeah.
To talk? Okay, great. We'll set that up after our meeting. Okay? Rich, how about you?
Going back, what did you say about El Portal, Piney Lake? Did, did I miss hear you?
El Portal, Hiawatha from El Portal.
So down Hiawatha.
There are two sections, Hiawatha. One of them where the current council member lives, which is really bad. And the other one is the other direction. It used to be that when you got out of town coffee, you had to go back.
Gee whiz. Thanks for mentioning that.
So, Donna, I, I definitely recommend getting Bob talking to Global.
Yes.
And.
Well, I will call Global first thing tomorrow morning and see if we can set up so that the, we can chat, okay, Bob? All right. Great. Thank you. And anybody else, I'll let you guys know, too.
All of Doyle's work.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of, you'll probably have to come back out and verify some of the roads that you've proposed. But I'm definitely in favor of what Bob's talking about versus what some of this currently.
Okay. All right. Thank you then. So, then we will leave that for that. Tomorrow morning, I speak with them and then I get back in touch with Bob and then I'll let everybody know and, you know, so that we can make some kind of a decision. Okay. Thank you. Let us move on then to the next. And that would be addition of the name of the town to the notice board near Stop 37. I believe Ralph said he had some information for us.
Yes. At the last meeting, we kind of talked about this, is what we have now, particularly the one down on Lake Shore Drive in Michiana's. It's just the message board. It's plain. It doesn't really, and it's, indicate what it is. And it, it is a, a place where you might want to tell people they're entering with the town of Michiana Shores. We talked about this last year. And I tracked down through the fire department who did the sign out here. And then I tracked down the Shoreland Hills people to find out who did the sign that they have. Because they're both kind of the artistic thing that I personally would like to see. No decisions are being made, but I've contacted them, I've talked to them. The, the group that did the sign in Shoreland Hills, they're based out of the Corizo. They do all sorts of this kind of work. The guy was, had a lot of questions. I went out to photograph, measure the thing, kind of told them what we were thinking of. And I had another conversation with a woman at another company that's based out of Michigan City and, Churk Creek, probably. And they say they do the same thing, although there's nothing that I can find sample-wise that is close to what we're looking for. But I have a meeting set up with them next week to go in and kind of see what they can do. But I'm going to kind of push this until we get some things on the table. And then I'll bring them back and, you know, we're not making any decisions. But I just want to kind of keep it moving along, so I'll keep working on it.
Great. Thank you. Collecting information. Did anybody else have a chance to look at anything? Did you encounter any kind of sign workers?
Joan, just said, penitentiary outfits still make signs? Like some of the signs on the path and those signs, those other signs. We got those pretty cheap, didn't we?
Well, we did, but I don't think they're doing as many signs as they did before because there's a couple of things that they turned me down on.
Okay. Sam did find out if.
I, I looked through, uh, I looked through the Uline catalog and some places online, but I couldn't find anything that was really going to be a good fit for it.
Okay. Thank you. So, then Joan said you're going to check out and maybe you could share also with Ralph then? You know, since he's collecting some information for our next, you know, next time we're all together. Okay. Thank you very much, Ralph.
I think it'd be nice to have something done by the time the end of spring arrives and people start coming out here. And, you know, if it looks nice, we could even update the sign message board that's over by K.K. Park.
That sounds nice, too.
We'll work our way through those.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, great. So, we've got some work going on that. All right. Our report on the STR moratorium. Okay. Back to Ralph.
We have a list of a number of things that have various, all sorts of people have proposed that we do to modify the ordinance to make it better and better. I have spent quite a bit of time reviewing the Indiana Code to see if there's any obvious conflicts. And there's probably half a dozen of those things that aren't going to get by the Indiana Code. I mean, we'll, I'll talk.
Good ideas, but they were.
To brag specifically about it, but basically, you can't put requirements on a short-term rental and wouldn't put on other homes in the community. And that's a pretty broad thing, but you can't make it arduous for the short-term rental people and if you're not making it arduous for the rest of the community. So, that's going to take some discussion. But there's a few things that are definitely, don't fall into that category. And we'll, we'll see what, I don't know, Brad, where you are with your evaluation of the various items?
Very preliminary at this point.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll talk to you separately about that.
Okay.
Yep.
So, just to remind everybody, the moratorium that we put into place lasted until March 8th or 9th. I'm a little worried at this point that we'll get to the point where we'll make some decisions and the right step up and go through the whole process. That is going to take a little bit of time. So, we'll wait another month or so, but we may want to start considering the fact that we may have to extend the moratorium.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much, you know, for this information. And let's just keep working on it and, you know, move into next, next month then. Okay. Under new business, we have the refuse contract. Joan reminded all of us and the meeting of the 29th that we will, the dates, the various contracts expire. And the first one coming up is the refuse contract. So, Joan, can you please inform us of the steps that we will have to follow with regards to finding another contract setup?
The thing we have to do is, I want to send them to, I do have the specs that we had on the last contract, I mean, on the last.
Okay.
Proposal. So, and then from there, then you'll have to decide. You'll have a meeting, open the bids and decide which ones you want to, based on what they.
Okay. Now, does this go out as a general bid, like through the newspaper to any contractor? So, we're interested in responding?
It can go to any contractor that you want to choose. And also, it can be put in a newspaper. And I'm, I'm checking into that because I had one email that came through said that possibly we may not even have to bid it out. But I haven't found that email yet.
Okay. All right. So, I'll also check.
Is it, is it possible that if you only get one bid and it's acceptable, we don't have to have two? So, but it'd be good to find out and then we could follow up with the current company to see.
You can also extend the new company, I mean, the present contract with the present refuse.
Does the contract allow that? Is the language in it?
I've done it before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Made arrangements for that. Okay. So, Joan, will you be handling that then regarding the refuse contract?
I don't know who to contact because we only had two the last time and the gentleman said he didn't want him to be.
Well, yes. One of the gentlemen, yes.
He decided he didn't want to be contacted because we never choose him. We always choose the same one.
Well, I think it would be worthwhile to contact the existing people and have the discussion that, hey, look, the contract's coming due. We are anticipating extending that contract.
Yeah. First step. Okay.
Simplify as much as we can.
Absolutely. Well, then.
We're happy with the service.
Oh, well, so far, yes. Everything has been fine. So, then, would that be regarding that kind of a contact? Would that be one of the council members contacting them? Or is that a contact that comes out from your office, Joan?
Council.
Okay. So, which one of my councilmen, and Ralph, you're already doing a lot of things. So, which one of the council members would like to contact the refuse companies? Maybe we give that job to Michael since he's not here today? Well, you know what happens. Or Rich maybe wants to do it? No?
No, he won't do it.
No? Okay. Then we'll, I will ask Michael if he says no, because I know that Sam has some other stuff he's starting to work on. Unless, Sam, you're passionate about refuse contact, contracts? Okay. So, I'll ask, I'll ask Michael first.
I'll leave it to my neighbor who is, seems to have a good relationship with the current manager.
Okay.
So, Donna, I would recommend that you send Michael the latest version of the contract that was signed so he has a reference point before he calls them.
Yeah. Yeah, he may have a copy from the old one, but we'll get one from Joan to make sure we have it correct. All right, Joan? Great, thank you very much. Okay, thanks for the comments. All right, so that is taken care of, so that's for Michael. And then when we had our little workshop for the town council members, we did a little bit of, you know, hashing out of things that may be important and some of the things that we would like to set as tasks for ourselves for this coming year. So our little, I had made a few notes over there and then of course our minutes listed some other things for those and we could share some of those right now. And I don't know that we need to set it in stone right now, but we may want to, I think we should discuss something that we might be able to, you know, begin, you know, getting our teeth into to start working on. So of course we've already addressed the comprehensive plan. We do want to make sure that that gets done this year, that that doesn't get pushed off. You know, approving the revisions to the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely, and the short-term rental ordinance?
Yes.
It needs to be a hybrid.
Okay, so we've got the, you know, so I'm not, you know, I don't know whether, we want to number these one and two and three and whatever on, on working on this. But so among these, we also added the question of the trash and recycling receptacles has come up as well. Moving the bins back from the street per our town code, what needs to be done. So let's say, you know, that's something we need to address this year too. We have been mentioning it in every single newsletter that goes out. There's a reminder that says, please move your, your bins back to, off of the street, back towards your house. There's no threat ever in there or anything, but it just says move them back. And there is a reminder, I went back and checked from the last three, four years of the newsletters that went out and that little sentence is included in those. So I think that we need to work on that to get that done. At least that would be my suggestion.
Well, the thing with the roads, the community crossing grant is also...
Definitely, is that, we have roads is here. So roads, that's the number one. So that should be number one.
We got to get those front.
Right, okay.
Put that slide.
Absolutely not, so roads is number one for us to work on right now. Then we have, as we said, the short-term rentals need to be worked on the comprehensive plan. Definitely, then the trash and recycling, I believe, is what should go on. At least that would be my thought. I mean, I'm not deciding on these on my own. These are my notes, Joan. There's nothing signed over there. Okay. The recodification of the code work, okay, is something that we mentioned that we need to work on. And there were various ways to do something. So I had worked with one company, I'll go back and talk to them about doing, but I don't know where on this we would maybe put it. So right now we've got roads as number one and we have short-term rentals and the comprehensive plan is two and three maybe.
That's an investigation. We need to get a feel for what the options are and what the costs are because it's potentially very expensive and we would need to spread it out over multiple years.
Okay, so then, so that'll be, but that is on, so like I'm dropping that down to like maybe number five right now. Because the trash and recycling receptacles, those are in the code to where, let's say, make sure that things are being taken care of. Recodification, okay, then I'm putting that down as a number five, but we may have to move it around. Now, ARPA funds we still have, so we really need to look into how best we can be using them and perhaps we can use some of the money that's available there for other things and improvements in the town. So we need to work on the ARPA funds as well, so that has to be brought in here. So maybe that should even be, you know, a number five instead and move the codification to SIPs. And then I think that, pretty much that does everything because I think everything else is something we've addressed already. The only thing we really didn't speak about is making sure that we keep pushing within the town and any kind of newsletters we put out and everything about the green spaces and the trees that are here in the town. And I think maybe to add to this actually would be the conservancy issue that we would like to have the town's lots all entered into some kind of a conservancy in one way or another so that we could preserve the green spaces here in the town. So, and I think that that's actually really important, you know, for us so that we would, you know, keep sort of like the character and the feel of the town. So I don't, I'm not sure what your suggestions would be, you know, with regards to numbers, but these were some of the things, so that everybody who's listening can hear it and that, you know, these are things that we want to work on and we can put together a little, you know, maybe a better list of the numbers.
Well, I have another thing that we didn't bring up at the meeting, the workshop. And that is a replacement for the truck the town has.
Oh.
You know, it's come up, came up in 2020, it came up in 21 and 22. And it's going to be a complex decision that can process. We have to look at all the options, none of them are going to be inexpensive. And it's going to take a committee to do this because I think there's a lot of work involved. So I don't know, it just needs to be on the list.
Yeah, okay, so we added to the list for something to, you know, that we have to address, you know, going forward in the future, so, okay. Thank you for bringing that up. So that was, you know, the section on setting our goals. We're coming up to 23. So right now, roads are number one. Under number two, I have included the short-term rental code revisions. Number three is the comprehensive plan revisions. As number four, I wrote down trash and recycling receptacles and forcing that part of the ordinance. And then number five, the spending ARPA funds, spending in ARPA funds. Number six, the code book. Number seven, green space. But maybe we move green space first and then codification next? I mean, what is your thought? So, I mean, let me know what you think about this list. And then on eight, I have the truck. Unless you want to make, move some things around?
Well, you know, with some discussion that ARPA funds could potentially be used for the truck. We don't know that.
We don't know that for sure.
We have an investigation. So I would say we brought the truck up either close to the ARPA funds or add it into that discussion.
All right, we can add it into the ARPA, okay.
That it's a separate thing.
All right. So let's put it up into that section then, okay. Okay.
And given the timeliness of the ARPA funds, you might want to put both of those up.
Yeah.
If we get past the initial investigation, I think then we can definitely re prioritize it. Plus, you know, the number two and three hopefully will be...
Will be done pretty soon, but we do want to complete them. So I don't want to put those off because we probably will have to extend something, so. Okay, so those are for our goals, hopefully, that we can work on for this year. Moving into attorney report now. Brad, do you have some extra, something you can add to us today?
Yeah, just a little bit. I know on the enforcement and penalties collection letters, we, I revised and sent a new template to Joan. I think there needs to be some clarification, maybe direction from the council of how those letters are being delivered. I know you've determined that it's your clerk's kind of duty to do that. She's engaged us, we're asked for assistance. Do you want those letters coming directly from the clerk? Do you want them sent from our office? I could see justification either way. The essential language of the letter right now says, this is your last chance before it gets referred to the attorney. So that makes sense to come from Joan. That can be changed easily, you know, if there comes a loss or it's a board's discretion, council's discretion. I don't pursue that.
Okay, well, I think we need to consult with Joan on that too as to whether she can get those or whether the clerk's office can get those kind of initial letters out first before it goes to you. It's not an initial letter, but it's a final letter from the town before it goes to them. Would you be able to do that?
We've already been sending them out. We sent them out about two months ago and you turned that over to...
Okay, so if you don't get a response within a certain time period, then you just turn them over to the attorney?
That's already been done on some, well, we have to redo it now. That has to be redone.
Okay, so, so your thoughts, Joan?
Well, I say we have Brad and Janice going to take a shot at it because, you know, it's taken a long time to get here. It constantly comes up about getting people to pay the fines. And let's use this as a test to see if having an attorney letter on it gets people off the duff.
All right. Any thoughts from you, Rich?
I was going to say the same thing. It would seem to carry more weight from the office.
That's why we've always done it that way.
And we use the...
Sam? Okay, just a minute, Sam, hold on. Okay, I didn't need to interrupt, I just wanted him to wait. Okay, so Sam?
Oh, yes, I, I think it would warrant having a conversation with Brad about the overall process that we have in place today for collections. We can, Joan, get a group together and talk about that. Because I, I think there's a need to have a standardized process for any type of collection or fines that is followed and is clear and rigorous and make sure that it's followed through on each and every situation. And from my experience in my, my business background, I know that, you know, it's great to have an attorney write the lender letter. It's going to cost you a little bit more to have that attorney do that work for us. So I think that we need to take an approach where the town attempts to make collection efforts up to a certain point and then we have a process to escalate it up to our legal counsel to pursue and to take all the appropriate steps depending upon the type of debt that is owed to the, to the town. We're not going to want, you know, file a lawsuit against someone that owes us $20 for a garbage can violation. But I'd be willing to participate in that type of conversation and lead that discussion as well.
Okay, that sounds good. I mean, any other thoughts from...
We have a ordinance for it or a resolution, I can't remember which, on the process.
Well, then, maybe, but it's still to make sure that it's clear to everybody then if we get together and then you have, for instance, Sam is interested from the council to work on that and perhaps even to sit down with the code enforcement officer, with Joan, and perhaps Brad as well with regards to setting up a good process. And that will help all of us work it together efficiently.
So am I hearing that we don't want Brad to do anything right away? And we want this team to get together and discuss it with Brad included before...
I'm not saying that at all, at all at this point because I don't know to the extent of what, how delicate some of our collections are. So if there's something that's been out there for a year, absolutely we want to escalate it and move it over to Brad.
And I think that process is already to an extent underway for Joan.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so then...
So you can have Brad's organization pump up the letters.
For those things.
For the existing ones that you've already got, yes.
And then Sam and...
Wait, just a minute.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Joan and I will get together.
All right. Okay, so just to clarify then, we've already got things started. So Joan is already working with Brad on getting those out. But for going forward and how we handle and maybe setting up time limits, then Sam can spearhead that for the town council if it's acceptable to the rest of you. And then work together with Deb, Brad and Joan, on putting together a formula for going forward and how timelines and things like this. So, all right, Sam? Sam? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, good, so that's, that's what we can do going forward for that. Thank you very much. Anything else, Brad?
Just quickly on that, I was a little late to the meeting tonight. I've got a carryover that I thought we were done at the Long Beach with their MZA. They accommodated my meeting, the meeting is 6:30 this evening. They're doing the same thing in February, but that'll be our public meeting. So I may be a little late beyond seven. For the most part, your agenda's fine without a term at the beginning. I'm just giving you that notice in case something comes up. I will be here, I will be here as quickly as I can, but maybe not by 7:00.
Okay, thanks for letting us know, okay. All right, so we move on now quickly and hopefully we can get this stuff done fast. Ms. Laney's business. I have, we mentioned, the ARPA fund we mentioned already in our plans that we need to work on. So that covers it. As a reminder, I had sent out to all the council members, Sam, you may not have yet, but I did send out to council members before on the MS4. And MS4 is a designation that has been given to our town. And that is, I'm looking for what those four S's mean. Brad, you remember what those were? Stormwater quality, wait, well, there are, it's four, actually four S's in this. And it does have to do with storm water control within communities. And we have, of course, the drainage ditch that goes through our town and we don't really have it. We don't have much property that is on Lake Michigan and there are no drains at that part. However, our town has been made an MS4 designee, which we never had before. So we have to respond to them by April 17th. I was pulling together the various paperwork today at home and I am going to put together all the information that I've collected on it and send it all off to you so that next month we can talk about this MS4 designation because we do have an option, we have options. We either accept it the way it is and there may be benefits and there are some benefits that would accrue to us from that membership. Or we can ask petition to be included with someone else for the MS4. That would be potentially another community near us like Dunland. I don't know if Michigan City would be able, Long Beach maybe, even La Porte County perhaps. You know, so that we could be part of theirs rather than individual. Brad, do you have something to say on that?
This stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System.
Yeah, okay.
As far as entities to go into, La Porte County would still be an option. Michigan City kind of branched off into their own things. Maybe a contract with them, but I don't think they're looking at joining into MS4. Trail Creek, Long Beach, those were in combination with La Porte County as well as the city of La Porte, I believe the city of La Porte's fallen out. So you may have good partners between the county and Trail Creek and Long Beach.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I will reach out to them too then, to find out. So I needed to bring this up so that, you know, everybody would just be aware that we have, that is something. I don't have it on the list, but I think I'm going to add it on our list, MS4 designation, okay? Okay, because we do have to answer for that by April, within the month of April, okay.
Reggie Corthals, I think, to talk with.
I'm sorry?
Reggie Corthals.
Reggie Corthals, yeah, she and I have been in touch and I have actually attended several of the sessions that, you know, has, have taken place with regards to this, when this first started out. Okay, so the next, what did I write down here? Okay, I had, oh, I had mentioned at the end of our meeting, one of our meetings in December, that I think we gave it, we decided to give a gift to Doug, who was the driver of the refuse truck, you know, to thank him for the work that he's done and so forth. But I had brought it up at the end of our meeting, but not within the meeting with regards to a small gift for our website coordinator, Samantha Arnold. I think it would be nice for us to give something to her and I'd like to bring that out to you guys to add your thoughts to it.
I proposed this a year ago when she got the new website up and we kind of died.
Yes, it did.
I'm still in favor. She put a huge amount of time into rebuilding the bins from scratch and she maintains it. We can't repay her for that, but I think a gift card of...
Yeah.
A hundred dollars or something in that, Rich, would be nice if they can go.
I agree. I agree too. Rich, any thoughts from you on that? Okay, Sam?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then, so Ralph, are you making a recommendation that we do a gift card for a hundred dollars? Or are you offering that we, that it should be a little bit more, make a suggestion?
I'm okay with a hundred dollars.
Okay, all right. Okay, Joan, we will need then a...
We're going to vote on it.
Oh, yeah, we do have to vote on it, okay. So Ralph made a motion and Rich is seconding? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so four ayes for a hundred dollar gift card, okay.
Can you predict where the place should go from?
I think maybe just a general gift card, can we do that? I'm sure that would be like a Visa card or something like that. And then that way she can use it wherever she'd like. Okay, so then, I'm counting my numbers here, okay. The next thing I have listed here was, I encountered a problem with the emails. I use my personal email, dinah.dumbrice@gmail.com for most of the emails that I've been writing, but I would like to keep everything only on one. So when we established the new website, I was using dinah.myshores, M-I-shores@gmail.com. However, I ran into a problem where information I was getting from the network, the municipal network from AIM stopped coming to me. And when I inquired, you know, by referring back to AIM to find out why am I not getting these, was I removed and whatever, a young man there looked into it and he says... man there looked into it, and he says, mine are being blocked and turned back to me because, not to me, but it goes back to them, because I have been using and getting, I guess, maybe I get so many emails from various things, that the government ones are not going through to me. So I was asking Samantha, and believe me, I spent hours trying to figure out what was going on, why I'm not getting all of this. I redid both of the websites. I mean, not websites, but email addresses. I went in and started them up again and all this. But I asked Samantha, and when she looked into it, I think she said it would cost $25, I think she said, a year for each email address if someone uses it. So I have a question to you, Joan. You use an email that's, that is the townofmichiganashores.net from Comcast, right? Or Comcast on that? Is it, how, how do you use yours?
I want to put treasure@townofmichiganashores.net, and it's through Microsoft.
Okay. Well, then, is there a possibility, if, to make sure that I can get emails like, because I want to make sure I keep getting AIM and things like that?
It's very possible. I'll check with her.
If you could check with that, I'd appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much. So that's all I needed to ask about that.
Well, Donna, I would add that if I still get the AIM stuff to my Ralph, Dyna, my shores.
Yeah. Are you on the network? Do you get municipal notices and things like this I was getting?
That's the AIM stuff.
Okay, all right, because I was getting. AIM, I get the major emails, but for the network where there, you know, there's sometimes a lot of information that, you know, each community says, and this would really help, like with the short-term rentals, because you get a lot of like little threads. Joan gets those, too, I think, don't you?
I can get a lot of things.
Yeah, and I just, and mine disappears. So that's what I wanted to find out. So anyway, I'm working on it. I don't mean to have the town spend any extra money. I'd rather just do it my own way, and I'm trying to figure out what to do. So, okay, so now those are done, and I'm, I'm sorry, I made so many notes here, so I'm talking to myself. All right. Under Ms. Lainey's business, one more issue. We have the keys to these, to our notice boards. So far, we've only got two of the notice boards, correct? The third one is not coming yet?
It's somewhere between Texas and here.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Like nowhere.
All right, I'm just checking to see that. So we have two sets of keys, meaning four keys. Two of those keys are still hanging on a keychain at my house, and I've got them up on the hook where I keep all of our keys. But I wanted to ask, who now has the other two keys? Is there one with you, Joan?
I have one key.
Okay, so who has the other key? Do you happen to have that, Rich? Sam, do you maybe have one of our keys?
No.
All right, so we're missing a key already.
They're all interchangeable.
They're interchangeable, but there were four. That means, I know I have two, and Joan has one. Okay. All right, so.
So Sam definitely needs one.
Yeah, because he said he would be doing that.
Is there, I didn't check. I don't remember getting two keys on them when you gave them to me.
Yeah, my son dropped them off for you. So I'll ask him if he gave you. There should have been two in there. Okay, there should be two. Okay, all right. So you can double check, because Sam needs to get.
Joan needs one, Sam needs one, Donna needs one, and I'm Sam's backup. I thought we should have one.
Right. And then we have two that can be locked somewhere, like in the safe deposit box or something, since it's there. Anyway, okay, so the keys, I wanted to bring that. So we'll figure that one out. So Joan will check to see if there's two. Okay, let me mark these off. Oh, communications. I received a communication from the League of Women Voters regarding a meeting this Saturday with the various legislators of our area. So I am going to attend that meeting. I go, I belong to the LVW anyway. So I'm going to go on behalf of our town. Next, I received a call about three, I think it's 217 Groveland and the state of the yard at 217 Groveland. I don't remember the name anymore, who owned it, but the person who called me, I think, must, must have been one of the neighbors, said that the owner had died, and now the place looks horrible, and they hate the way it looks. Okay, that, you know, there's leaves everywhere, and there's bags of trash in the yard, like big black bags and so forth. And what are we, as a town, going to do about it? So that's, that's an issue. The next was, I received a call from a gentleman named, oh geez, I didn't write his name down, but that's okay. Sure, I think his name, last name was Mr. Schwartz. But he was calling on behalf of Rosemary Leeds Phillips, the daughter of the gentleman for whom Leeds Park is named. And I guess this gentleman handles her affairs. It sounded like he was maybe a business manager or something. So she wants to make a small donation to the Park Booster Club. So, you know, they're going to be, unless something already came in, Joan, I have no idea, because it would, I told them, I gave the address of the town, and I asked them to send it through to the town, and that you would make sure that the Booster Club then got it. So I did get that, I mean, a call from them, and we talked about that. Then I, the last time, I don't remember if we mentioned it at the town council meeting, but Joan had gotten a call from the Village of Michiana regarding leaves that had been piled up on the Michigan side, from the homes that are on the Indiana side, the people who are up on the Lake Shore Drive, not Lake Shore Drive, on Michiana Drive, near Lake Shore Drive, up on that hill, and coming back down on the hill. So I reached out and sent emails to three of the four homeowners whose leaves could possibly be in there. Three of them responded and said that they will make sure they take care of it. Two have already taken care of it. The third one, I'll have to remind them about it. But the fourth one, I think it's Abraham's is the last name of the owner that I found on Beacon. So that's the last person. I just wanted to make sure that we maintain nice relationships with the Village of Michiana, because they, I guess they were not very happy with these mountains of leaves that ended up on their side of the Michiana Drive. So just FYI, that those things were being taken care of. Okay. Joan, I have a question for you now. It's not communications, but I forgot to bring it up elsewhere. In the past, you have asked all the town boards for meeting dates. Do we need that for a publication somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will request from the plan commission, the dates.
We have them from the plan commission.
You already have them from the plan commission? Okay. Then we need it from the BZA. And I guess the Park Board and Booster Club, you know, unless they change something, you probably have those. So I will ask, I will ask the BZA to do that for you as soon as they can. With regards to the town council, do we need to worry about, we don't have any kind of, oh, yeah, we are going to have elections next, in November.
Right.
For the town. So, and that generally takes place on the second Tuesday, doesn't it? Is it going to be on the first? Yeah, there we go. So we may have to discuss, Joan, take a look at those for what we do. Do we just start an half an hour later or something or whatever? I mean, it's not going to be a huge crowd in here. It's just our town.
Probably not.
Yeah, so, but anyway, that just came to mind.
I have to keep it for the same hours.
Okay.
Regular.
All right. Okay, then, then there may not be any kind of problem. All right, I think I've mentioned everything that I wanted to mention. Now, public comment?
None.
None? Anybody else? Brenda? Anybody? No public comment? Okay. How about council comments? Rich?
I saw Joanne speaking of the Michigan side. She's the president.
Yeah.
I don't know her last name. Fisher.
Fisher, uh-huh, yeah.
And she said, stop 37 is going to be that priority.
Oh, wow, how nice.
Next spring. And earlier today, you asked me about the trees.
Yes.
Nick is here, so why don't we let Nick?
The trees were all perfectly cleaned up. All the big stuff has been taken out of the creek because water was running really heavy through there. I got to put some waders out to get some little sticks on it, but pretty much it's taken care of. I did submit a bill to, Joan, after I finish getting that little bit of stuff, I'll come over.
All right. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, good. Any other public comments? Sam? Not typical, public council comments. Sam?
No, no comments here.
Okay. Nothing from you? The only other comment I would ask is, thank you very much for trusting me and nominating me again. You know, for, you know, for the stuff. I'd love being involved with the town, so thank you. But I do have, oh gee, I did miss one that should have belonged in the others, but I will bring it up anyway, since I'm talking about it. One of the notice, one of the inquiries I received was the posting of minutes on our website. So it would really be good if we put our town council minutes up on the website. And my question will be to Brad, do they have to be approved minutes, or could they even be draft minutes?
Recommended that you only put the approved minutes up there.
Okay. Now, if we put the approved minutes up on the website, it is, Joan, in the past, has redacted the names of the people who sign the minutes. Is that necessary to do?
Not necessary, but I'm not putting my name up there, my signature on there.
Well, we're publicly elected officials, the town council members.
But it doesn't say. I.
Wait, Joan, just a minute. I want Brad to.
Just upload it version, then you could put, you could put the electronic signature, the slash S slash, and then the name typed out, if you want to show that it was.
Okay. All right, well, that sounds very good.
That meeting consistent will show the board members, board president.
Okay, excellent. That sounds great. So Joan, will you be able to do that for us?
Well, any one that I've always put on there, or fat hat on there, I always type the name that it was approved by the town council and such and such a date.
That's nice.
Okay. All right, thank you, Joan. So if you would be able to do that, I would think it would be really good if we can put those minutes out. So even if we get all the minutes from 22, it would be nice for us to be able to post those on the website for, for review. Okay? So that is it. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Ralph Box has moved to adjourn the meeting, and we are done. Thank you very much, everyone, for participating. Thank you.